So in the area where the proposed monument will be going, we will be leveling that area in accordance with the proposed foundation for the installation. Yes, sir. I have two measurements, if you'd like, Mr. Sweeney. I have both from the immediate base of the foundation of the installation, as well as from the paved cartway. Yes, sure. No, because the front edge of the installation is 50 feet from the edge of the highway, as you refer to it. And when we have the full site plan, which Mr. Kuyan will testify to in detail, that has the topography on the site plan, you can see the spatial difference between the edge of the highway and the front edge of the installation and where that specific drop you're referring to sits in between the front edge of the installation and the edge of the highway. Thank you.
Yes, sir. So you have this sign here, and you're talking about the advertisers. So you could have one advertiser on the east side and a different advertiser on the west side at the same time?
Potentially correct.
You wouldn't have more than one on each side?
At any given time. There is no splitting of the display. There's no parsing of the display.
So company A B C could be right there, and on the other side could be company X Y Z?
That's correct. Or potentially, you could have company A B C on what we would call the right-hand read, and you could have A B C on the left-hand read.
I have a question.
Can you say that again?
You could potentially have the same company on both sides at the same time, but most probably, as what most typically happens, you have two separate companies on either side of the display, either side of the installation, at the same time.
As compared to if the sign were a different angle, you could only do one advertiser at the same time? Let's say that were angled 90 degrees differently, pointing to the back, something like that.
Essentially, what you're discussing is a single face sign? If you had a single face sign, then it would only be viewable to traffic traveling in one direction, and it would only support one advertiser at a time.
As compared to this one being able to handle two?
Correct, because it's designed and placed to be viewable to traffic traveling in both directions. Yes, ma'am?
You're talking about two faces?
Yes, ma'am.
Each face is 733 square feet, right?
Because I know there was much discussion about the square footage, and of these installations, each one is specifically 733.44 square feet.
So the total, when you count both sides?
If you counted both sides, 1,466.88 square feet. Each of these installations is required to have a permit from NJ DOT. The maximum permitted area for each display in this location is 1,200 square feet. So the maximum total permitted by NJ DOT is 2,400 square feet when you combine both faces. Moving back to A2. Building materials would consist of character height of 1'7", the proposed Bridgewater font would be in an Edict Neo Bold, the brick itself would be a Glengarry 56 D D, and the top of the brick columns, as well as the roofing structure, would be stucco, and the frame of the visual communication technology would be in a black powder-coated finish material. The property would require vehicular access on a limited basis for the purposes of servicing the installation. That's being proposed by creating a porous pavement system in which it would be able to support the weight of a vehicle, but would be able to have the completely permeable and have grass growing through that. And that's what we would propose for the access itself. In order to create access to this site from a visibility standpoint, it would require the removal of a total of 41 trees. It would be 23 trees that are 8 to 15 inches in diameter, 17 trees that are 16 to 24 inches in diameter, and one tree that's 25 to 36 inches in diameter. And pursuant to your ordinance, what we are proposing to do is to replace those 41 trees with a total of 102 trees. 46 of them would be 4 inches in diameter. 51 would be 4 inches in diameter. And five of them would be 4 inches in diameter. And we would propose to plant those trees at any township-owned property that municipality so desired, and this tree replacement calculation is in full compliance with your ordinance. In addition to the significant tree placement, we were proposing 122 ground-level plants landscaped at the base of the installation. And beyond this specific landscaping plan that we have outlined here, we'd be willing to work with the board's professionals on any changes made to this landscaping plan, both in plant count and species type, if they felt that a different layout and different plant type was appropriate. I wanted to address how this particular sign location was designed from a size standpoint. There are seven key fundamentals to that sign design. They include, first of all, height. We want to ensure that we're not creating an installation wherein someone is trying to view the display through potential commercial traffic in front of them. We therefore set the bottom edge of our display above the commercial vehicle traffic in that particular state, which in New Jersey is governed at 13'6". We also have to take into consideration the topography that exists at this specific site. Secondly, non-viewable zone. We know that when a driver's line of sight is at an angle of 20 degrees or more to the display area, that from data from the Traffic Control Devices Handbook that dates back about 40 years at this point, that they cannot read the sign. That creates limits of the non-viewable zone. We need to assess the speed that motorists are actually traveling on the roadway, not just the posted speed limit. In this particular instance, that was measured by taking a five-way average for each direction that motorists were traveling. We know that on an off-premise sign from two studies that were done, one in 2011 and one in 2018, that the average number of characters, a character being a letter, an image, a punctuation mark, totals 64. We know from the Pennsylvania Transportation and Traffic Institute that for every 30 feet that somebody moves back away from a sign in order to make that character visible, it needs to grow by an inch. From a study done by Dr. Ronald Gibbons at the Virginia Tech Traffic and Transportation Institute, most recently is 2011, and there's other studies that predate that one, in order for the human eye to be able to discern, copy on a sign, images, text, et cetera, there needs to be some amount of background space so that the eye has a contrast. Gibbons' conclusion on that was that there should be 60% negative space, 40% ad copy. You will find other studies out there that suggest that that background space should be 70%. We've adopted the lesser of the two for the purposes of this calculation. And lastly, is viewer reaction time, dating back as far as 1973, and reaffirmed in 1982, is that we need to ensure that the sign is able to be viewed by a motorist for a period of up to 10 seconds when traveling at the average rate of speed on the roadway? Not to suggest that somebody would be staring at the display for 10 seconds, but they have the ability within that 10-second window in order to be able to see it. When you apply this analysis to this particular location, we take the height of the midpoint of the sign, which is 26 feet. We take into consideration that typically a driver's eye, at eye level, is sitting 5 feet above the roadway. That gives you a height to the midpoint of the sign of 21 feet. With that in mind, and knowing the start of the non-viewable zone is 20 degrees, we have a non-viewable zone in length that's 57.7 feet. So from 57.7 feet until somebody gets to the base of the sign, unless proverbially they're going to look through their sunroof, they're not going to be able to see the sign. Yes, sir.
Go back to the fundamental components of sign design.
Yes, sir.
So these spokes on this wheel?
Want to go back there? There you go.
These spokes are what you use to help you design the sign?
Correct.
There might be a spoke missing.
Yes.
What are ordinances? What are the township ordinances where you're going to put a sign? Should that be part of your design thinking process?
This is...
Question?
This fundamentals of the creation of the sign design is based purely in the quantitative study as to how the human brain visualizes, interprets, and interacts with text and images in the built environment. From a standpoint of scientific research surrounding signage design along highways, without regard for state regulations, without regard for local regulations, without regard for opinions. It's designed to be a quantitative, formulaic approach that, given the site conditions, what size sign and what height sign, given the location, the topography, the speed, is appropriate for that area from the sole... And when I say appropriate, I am solely quantifying appropriate in the sense of creating a sign face that can be safely viewed and interpreted by drivers while they're focusing on the primary task of driving without regard for any other considerations.
I hear you. So you don't think that whatever existing ordinances exist should not have any play at all in the design concept, structure?
It's our position that it's necessary to create these installations in a way that they are traffic safety-neutral to the motorists and to the public that are driving by them.
Away from you. I think that's the way you should do it. I'm just saying, I think there's a spoke missing. We should also look at what the ordinances are and what's required, you know, to minimize the number of variances that you might be looking for.
We always seek to limit the number of variances that we're looking for. But to come into this board, or any other board, and to not lead with what creates the safest site conditions is doing a disservice to the public.
I don't disagree. I'm just saying that I felt that you were missing the spokes. Which is, that is our opinion. Thank you.
I enjoyed the discussion on the subject matter.
Mr. Barkaskin?
Yes, sir.
Question. Will we refer to back to 19 something? Put the next screen up. You referred to one back to 1973 study, I believe it was?
There's a study that was done by Byss and Rockwell regarding viewer reaction.
You're using a study from 1973, which technology back then was totally, totally different than it is today. So how can you do a comparison of 1973 to 2023?
Issue of your...
Clear.
Sure.
I mean, you can look at a sign and be... Now you have your glasses on for doing anything. See a sign today, they're so clear. Back in 1973, you're lucky you could even make a printout on something. I don't see how they compare.
This particular study was the first study that was done on viewer reaction time. Since this study has been done, there have literally been countless. The reference to this one is simply to establish initially how long ago a 10-second viewer reaction time was deemed what was scientifically appropriate. And keep in mind, when we're talking about viewer reaction time, it's a period of time that an image or text is able to be viewed by a motorist, regardless of whether it was painted on the side of a barn, regardless if it was printed on large-format vinyl and attached to a wooden sign structure, regardless of whether it was on a steel monopole, for example, or whether it was in a tri-vision display that actually rotates. This analysis of viewer reaction time is simply, how long should it be viewable to a motorist, regardless of the medium or substrate in which it's produced?
Do you compare it to when they started doing back studies back to 1973?
Viewer reaction time and a conclusion that having a minimum of 10 seconds is what's necessary dates back to 1973. There have been a multitude of studies since then reaffirming that 10-second viewer reaction time beyond that one from 1973.
Mr. Barkaskin, one question. Are these the standards you would apply to a standard DOT sign, a highway sign over the roadway, so motorists could redesign and make a decision while they're driving?
The overwhelming number of fundamentals in this particular analysis emanate from the DOT regulations that yield the signs that you see along our interstate system. It's the reason why when you drive and you see an exit, and you ever look at the exit sign and you say to yourself, "Why does that sign have such a large green background?" It's because they decided there should be 70% negative space on that sign. It's the reason why, when you're driving along a limited-access highway and you have a posted speed limit of 65 miles an hour, why that 6 and that 5 are substantially larger than when you're on a 25 mile an hour roadway? Because you need to be able to see that 6 and that 5 further away because you're traveling at a higher rate of speed. That's all the fundamentals that went into this.
Okay. So would you equate sort of the DOT sign safety regard in terms of size to be equal to the size of an advertising sign?
I would break down each one of these individually. And I would have the height that we use in our analysis of being completely in line with what you would see accepted by DOT regulations for what we call wayfinding signs. Non-viewable zone would fall into the same category. Correlating sign size to speed certainly emanates with all the wayfinding signs. Number of characters is specific to outdoor advertising signs. Character size emanates from DOT regulations. Percentage of negative space, wayfinding signs typically have a 70% negative space, not a 60%. And viewer reaction time emanates from wayfinding signs. Thank you. Thank you.
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Character height?
Yes.
On one of these sheets, it says 31.3 inches.
Yes.
Is that the maximum? I mean, is that what you have to follow as a maximum?
Yes, I was getting to character height momentarily. But 31 inches is the height that a character needs to be in order to be viewable at this location at the start of the viewable zone. And that's simply by taking the length of the viewable zone and dividing it by 30 and growing the character by 1-inch height.
Well, my question is, when the catalyst prepares a sign, do you use 31 inches as the height? Or what do you do when you prepare a sign?
When we design the advertising copy, we utilize the same formula that we utilize here for ensuring that we're creating advertising copy that can be legible.
So it has to be somewhere around 31 inches?
I'm sorry, I didn't...
The character height has to be around 31 inches, that's what you're saying?
In order to be viewable at the start of the viewable zone, that's correct.
And you go along those recommendations that are here? Let's say someone is advertising something like, "Okay, TD Ameritrade for that."
Yes.
So each letter in that is the 31 inches high?
Each character area block would be 31 inches in height. We obviously have different font types that dictate different widths. We have capital letters and lowercase letters. But that's what would be necessary on this sign location to be viewable at the start of the viewable zone.
So, and the Bridgewater name tag would be how tall?
Bridgewater would be 1'7 inches and some change.
So it would not be the same size as the content font? And it couldn't be seen from the 880 feet away?
It would not be able to be seen at the start of the viewable zone based upon the character size calculation. And the reason for the disparity between the two from a calculation perspective is the Bridgewater characters is not anywhere near 64 characters. That stands on its own as a separate element on the sign structure, along with the township seal. Yes.
Why is the Bridgewater at the bottom there? Is the Bridgewater...
Why is it?
Are we deriving a benefit, our township, from our name being put on it and our emblem?
All of the monument installations, except for one that we... The first, very first one that we've constructed, all have municipal identification. Some of that municipal identification is in text, some of it is in seal. The benefits that the municipality derives from it is that the municipality has once every 2 minutes on the display to utilize to communicate anything that they want, based upon the proposed operating hours of this display. That's 510 times a day from either side of it. In addition to that messaging, there is emergency messaging that accompanies it. These installations are specifically designed from an architectural standpoint to create a sense of place and reinforce an identity that is a community, as compared to when you see just traveling along a roadway and you move from municipality to municipality, you have no idea where you're at because suburbia has just become a cut, copy, and replace of the prior municipality. So for all of those reasons is why we incorporate municipal identification on them in an architecturally-relevant way.
That's it. I'm with you, but still. Those physical letters, Bridgewater, and the emblem?
Yes.
Are we being paid to have that put on this? This is a private installation. I'm confused why Bridgewater is being put on a private...
For all the reasons that I just articulated. There is no financial compensation at this... To answer your question directly, as to financial compensation, there is no financial compensation that exists to Bridgewater Township for the installation of this location.
For myself, I prefer it wasn't on there. But I mean, I'd leave it up to someone like Scarlett, who has a better knowledge of planning. There's no benefit. The township receives no money with the word Bridgewater.
Let's distinguish benefit from monetary benefit. There's no monetary benefit.
If you remove the word Bridgewater from this sign, would you still be giving the access, the digital access?
Yes. They're mutually independent.
Again, I'm curious, why does it say 300 in letters, in bold letters, with our emblem on there?
We could read back the transcript, or I can reiterate it again. Monument signs are designed to reinforce a specific sense of identity in place that is a specific community. Hence why they incorporate municipal identification.
Why doesn't the Outfront Media sign on 22 East say Bridgewater underneath it?
Well, you'd have to ask Outfront Media that, but that's not a monument sign. That's an old billboard that dates back more than 60 years.
But it says Outfront Media, right?
Yeah, it is a brand-new... They removed the old sign, and they made a brand-new sign, and it does not have...
A Bridgewater or Outfront Media on it?
I believe on the corner it said Outfront Media.
It says Outfront, right on the bottom.
It says Outfront.
Do you have permission from the town to put Bridgewater underneath this with the emblem?
We would seek any approvals that this board, or the municipality, otherwise deems necessary for the incorporation of Bridgewater identification on the installation. And in fact, the design of this installation was reviewed, and there were multiple versions of it, and we had lengthy discussions, Scarlett and I, about the design and the incorporation of Bridgewater on the sign, how it would be incorporated, how it would lay out on the installation, whether or not there would be a seal, how the seal would be illuminated. So we spent an extensive amount of time on this specific subject matter with Scarlett before we came to this board.
Mr. Chairman, I'm going to have to... A representation was made, that I made comments. I heard comments. I heard design. My role had absolutely nothing in terms of giving advice to the design of this. The applicant has already stated, not this gentleman, but the applicant's already stated that many times that they met with administration and me. I don't want that to give the impression of... The board to have the impression that I in any way cooperated or collaborated in the design that you see tonight. They're on their own, and I'm sure that the applicant does not mean to suggest that it's otherwise.
The genesis really is own deriving any benefit other than digital benefit, probably.
And my answer to your question is yes. If your question is, is the municipality deriving any financial benefit from having Bridgewater on this specific installation? The answer is no.
And I'm just, you know, coming back to you saying that the other digital billboard on 22 East does not say Bridgewater on it. Granted, it is much smaller. So, you know...
We're not building a billboard, Mr. Foose. We're building a monument.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I think, having listened to the colloquy, it would certainly be if the board were inclined to approve the application, a condition of the application to obtain consent to the extent necessary from the municipality for the seal would certainly be an appropriate condition of approval.
See, that's what I was going for. I certainly wasn't trying to... Bridgewater Township and Scarlett okay this. By all means, if you have a condition of approval here, I think that's acceptable. Appreciate your input.
And I'll echo Mr. Anglacino. Whatever approvals this board, the municipality, deems necessary to incorporate Bridgewater identification on it, happy to seek. If this board desires to approve the application without Bridgewater identification, that's well within their purview. Happy to comply with that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Thank you.
One last question regarding the number of characters.
I'm sorry, can you say that again?
Number of characters that you will have is something like 64 or something? That's what it says?
Yes.
That's the maximum that you can have of this one?
That is the mathematical average based upon two studies that were done in 2011 and 2018 as to the number of characters that are implemented on an off-premise sign. I think where we last left off was the determination of the non-viewable zone at 57.7 feet. We know that the average speed of travel is 60 miles an hour. That converts to 88 feet per second. Now that we know that it's 88 feet per second that motorists are traveling on average, and we need a 10-second viewer reaction time, that would require a viewable zone of 880 feet in length. That 880 feet, when added to the 57.7 feet of the non-viewable zone, creates an installation wherein it would need to be visible at 937 feet away along the paved cartway. When you apply the 1-inch to every 30-feet calculation, you get a character height of 31.3 inches. When you apply the width of the character to the character height for the overwhelming majority of all font types that converts at 80%, you end up with a character block of 5.4 square feet. We have 64 characters on the average installation. That's 347 feet in copy area. When you apply the 60-40 calculation of negative space to copy area, you end up with a total sign area that is mathematically 868 feet. Heard the feedback from this board, from the prior application. We went and revised this application and reduced the overall sign area to the 733 square feet that you see submitted before you, based upon our discussions previously. Yes, sir. Correct. Done elsewhere in...
That is the number of studies. Was going back to 1973. Three was going back to 1980. Set into different parts of this township.
There were studies that were done in a variety of states, both on a state level and a federal level. Yep. Yep. No, so this, and all of the elements that go into this analysis are widely available and widely accepted in the creation of signage along roadways of all types. And most of it all emanates from both a federal and state level with the creation of wayfinding signs, directional signs in the right of way, any number of them. None of the information contained in this assessment was created by us or created by Catalyst. It was the highest and best available data from the scientific community that have spent their career designing signs in the built environment, applied to specific locations. All of this is publicly available. There's nothing proprietary about it. They do, but they. Sure. If you take a look at the standard sizes that are implemented by the outdoor advertising industry and permitted by New Jersey, they are 1,200 square feet, 20 foot by 60 foot, 960 square feet, 16 by 60, 1,000 square feet, 20 by 50, 14 by 48, which is 672 square feet, 12 foot by 41 feet, 3 inches, which is 491 square feet, 10 and 1/2 by 36, which is 372 square feet, 10 foot by 30, which is 300 square feet, and 12 foot by 24 feet. Okay? So what everybody else does is they look at the posted speed limit and they pull off the shelf the standard size based upon the speed limit. It's the reason why you go out to 287 and the signs that are along 287 sit at 1,200 square feet. We're taking the time to do the math specifically for each site location. Everybody else is just pulling the standard rectangles off the wall.
A question.
Yes, sir.
If you were, and I'm looking at this page.
Sorry. Name one that's up there.
Copy area, negatives.
Yes.
Blah, blah, blah. If you were to lower the sign, in other words, the concrete at the base, if you were to make that.
Yes.
Lower, would that impact your viewable zone area? Would that change any of the other measurements?
What it specifically does is it changes the distance of the non-viewable zone. So instead of it, Mr. Bonjourner, being 57.7 feet, it would be something less than that. And because that would, because it would be something less than that, would.
That means you would have more viewable zone.
The viewable zone would stay the same, but the start of the viewable zone, sorry, Mr. Anglacino, didn't mean to hit you in the head with the laser, but the start of the viewable zone would be closer to the base of the installation.
You follow that?
Yes. So if the, if the display was lower to the ground, that was your question, what is the impact on the calculation?
Right.
The impact on the calculation specifically is that the length of the non-viewable zone becomes less. So it's something less than 57.7 feet. Okay?
Is that good?
It, yes, I think it's great. Anything that reduces sign area reduces the investment we have to make in the installation because every square feet of this technology is very expensive. Okay? So by reducing the non-viewable zone, then instead of the sign needing to be viewable 937.7 feet away, that becomes a lesser number. Okay? And if that becomes a lesser number, then the distance away that the sign needs to be viewed is overall is less.
Isn't the key piece of information, the viewable zone, 880 feet, and doesn't that stay the same? You lower it or not?
That always stays the same because that's correlated back to speed. If you lower it, what you do is you change the length of the non-viewable zone.
Okay, so.
But if.
We agree that non-viewable getting smaller is good.
Yes.
And we're gonna, the viewable zone is gonna stay at 880 feet.
Regardless.
So why wouldn't we just, you know, make it lower?
Because you can't create a condition where you have somebody trying to view the display through the commercial vehicle traffic potentially in front of them. That's why we're always setting the bottom edge of our displays above commercial vehicle traffic.
Talking like a tractor trailer?
Box truck, tractor trailer, bus.
Don't see too many on 22, but okay.
And, but to your point, let's get down to the math of it. If you look at the fact that nine, based upon this height, the height that, the distance away that the sign needs to be viewable is 937 feet. Okay? Of that 937 feet, only 57 feet of it is non-viewable zone. Okay? So we're talking about 6% roughly. So by moving the sign down in height, one foot, two foot, three foot, you're only affecting a 6% part of the calculation. I could do the math for you, but even if we reduce the height of the sign by five feet, the distance in that viewable zone is maybe gonna move seven feet. And seven-foot distance on 937 feet away is not gonna have a sizable impact on the character height and therefore the character area.
I hear what you're saying. You know, reducing the height may impact one of your variances. Right? Aren't you above height in one of the variances?
Yes, we have a height variance that's requested, that's correct.
So if you reduced it and everything was still good, you might eliminate one of your variances. Just a thought.
Yes, we have, we have the sign at 39 feet, 3 inches to the top.
Even if you reduce it, you will not be able to eliminate that height variance.
I'm sorry, try that, I apologize.
If you reduce by five feet, it's not going to help you reduce that one variance. It will not help.
Even if you reduce the height by, let's say, five feet, it's not gonna have a dramatic impact on the overall sign area calculation, but if the board would like, we would be happy to provide a chart for every foot reduction in height, how it would impact the overall sign area.
One more paper. Just what you're proposing, we are overwhelmed.
What we're proposing.
Okay. Unless it's pivotal to a decision by this board, please, for members of public sake in our state, we don't need any more information. You have overwhelmed us to the point where we're getting confused. So we're good.
Unless the board has any further questions from me.
I do, Mr. Bartowski. Can we go back to the screen?
Yep. Yes.
That one. That one right there. I'm gonna use two, one phrase and one word that other members used. Mr. Sweeney used the word robust and Mr. Foose down there used a thing for Bridgewater. You use those, look at those that were and the phrase by them, and you come up with 868 square feet. In my opinion, how does that fit into Bridgewater? I'm really trying to imagine, if you drive around Bridgewater, how does that really fit into Bridgewater? Maybe you're gonna repeat yourself, but the two of them brought up very interesting points that I really listened to.
Sure.
They were doing it, but those, between robust and a spike, you know, then for Bridgewater, I really need better explanation of how 800 and something square feet.
You need better explanation as to.
Of how it fits Bridgewater.
The character.
Sure.
Mr. Sweeney used the word robust. It's a, it is, it's a humongous compared to what we look at in Bridgewater.
I.
And I have, I'm having a hard time with that concept to how 800, say, let's make it close to 900 square feet, fits into that. It is robust and there's no, if you're looking at 287 signs at 1,200 square feet and stuff like that, we're not going 287, we're not on Route 80, we're not on, we're on Route 22 or whatever.
Right, and where we have proposed is 733 square feet. And to your point, we believe that these signs are site-specific based upon the built environment that's around them. So when you, when you, when you ask the question to me, how does it fit into the context of Bridgewater, I think the question's more nuanced than that. And I think it's how does it fit into this particular area of Bridgewater? And when I look at this particular area of Bridgewater to the road that it's adjacent to, to the fact that it's a divided roadway with a posted speed limit of 55 miles an hour, and it has zero, to the north side of the road, there is, if I can, take me back to the aerial, please, on the north side of the road, there is no built-out area, no developed lots immediately to the east and the west of this particular site location. Then the, and then I look at the height of what's being proposed here relative to that particular area, and I say to myself, in this particular area, contextually, I believe that this at 733 square feet, and I believe 39 feet in height, a little bit zoomed out, please, is contextually appropriate. That's why we go through the math. Because you see a variety of sizes along our installations as compared to Mr. Sweeney's point, pulling a standard rectangle off the shelf. Because that math therein lies gives you the answer for what's contextually appropriate from the speed that motorists are traveling and the topography in that particular vicinity. Because it's about precision.
Do you feel that that size sign will accomplish what you want based on the speed of the road where you're locating it? And that, what you come up with your square footage?
We know from past experience in building an innumerable number of these installations that at 733 square feet at this height, 50 feet off the edge of the roadway, with a divided roadway, that we're going to create a sign that at the end of the day is traffic safety neutral, and we can stand behind that.
And this is what you, your conclusion was?
Yes, because this is, this is the specifics that we use in, to taking into consideration all of our installations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
I have a question for you.
Yes, ma'am.
When I look at this particular sheet, you see the Highway 22.
Yes.
Going in the west direction, people traveling will see one face of the sign, right? Now, the other faces also have a sign, so people traveling towards the east direction, how will they, it's too far away for them to look at the sign. You know, look at this particular drawing sheet.
Are you referring to?
East, east direction of Route 22.
Are you referring because the roadway's divided?
Right, it's so far apart, you know, east to west is so far apart, and if I'm traveling in the east direction, I will not be able to see that sign, so why do you have two-face sign? That's a question.
That is exactly why the sign is sized at 733 square feet, because in this particular site, we have to take into consideration the fact that we have a divided roadway.
If I'm traveling towards the east direction, the distance between that sign and the east direction is almost like 200 feet, more than 200 feet.
Are you, are you talking about the distance from the edge of the installation straight across?
Yes.
That, that distance is not the relevant distance. The relevant distance is, go back, is, that's fine, stay right there. Either or. The relevant, blow that slide up for me, please, James. The relevant distance, because nobody's looking at the sign when they're here because they're next to the sign, the relevant distance is the straight line that exists from the sign installation to the paved cartway. And that's why we're creating a sign face that's able to be viewed 900 feet away.
So on the next, right, you have the non-viewable zone and the viewable area that.
So this is specifically, as I had referenced, for the light blocking technology. This has nothing to do with the math, but rather where somebody, if they were standing in any of that area in red and looking towards the installation, they would not be able to see any of the advertising copy on the sign face. Regardless of daytime or nighttime, it would be solid black.
So the east part of Route 22, the non-viewable zone is much bigger. In that picture, you see that, how much bigger? The non-viewable zone, which is a red in color, is much, much bigger on the other side of 22.
No, it's, it's the same. The sign face has a lateral viewable area that is 60 degrees, 30 degrees off-center in each direction. So if we were not using light blocking technology and you were directly across Route 22 from the installation, you looked at the installation, you'd be able to discern the advertising copy on the sign face. With the light blocking copy, it would be solid black. Light blocking technology, excuse me. Mr. Bonjourner, did you have a question?
I'm good.
Thank you.
I got one. Are there any signs similar to this one anywhere else in the area?
Are there any?
These two-sided signs, on the others, on one side of a highway.
Yes, along 22?
Anywhere in New Jersey. You have a two-sided sign in New Jersey somewhere that's the size that people would be able to see?
That's this exact square footage, because they're all custom sized, something close to it. Yes, I could get you a list of signs in municipalities we have in New Jersey and the square footage of those.
Okay, and that are two-sided signs?
Yeah. The overwhelming majority of our installations have two displays. Thank you. Other questions?
Real quick, some general housekeeping. How many other, I don't know if I should use monument or billboard, but how many other monument billboards are there in Bridgewater?
There are no other monument displays as we would define them for the purposes of outdoor advertising in Bridgewater at this time.
And another issue, you didn't mention the intervals. At what intervals are you planning on changing the copy?
Whatever this board concludes is appropriate for Bridgewater.
That's a slippery slope and I would like the board to stay away from anything arbitrary and capricious for obvious reasons.
Mr. Chairman, now that you've mentioned that, I believe that the testimony at the previous meeting was that New Jersey had determined that eight seconds is the appropriate time. That is the only standard that is not arbitrary that was testified to during the course of these proceedings. So by the chairman's own standard of non arbitrariness, eight seconds is the only standard that there is. Any other standard would be by definition arbitrary. I think what Mr. Bartowski indicated is that he's willing to work with the board because in previous testimony, I think you indicated that you wanted to see, my recollection is 13 seconds, and the applicant was willing to work with you in that regard, but the only non arbitrary figure is eight seconds.
Is that eight seconds for monument displays or for digital signage?
It's, it is a, it is eight seconds for off-premise signs that fall under the purview of NJDOT, and both monument signs and traditional digital billboards as we understand them fall under the purview of NJDOT. For, in the interest of time and our prior discussion on this subject matter, it's my understanding that this board has approved a conversion of a static sign to a digital sign and required that sign to change at 13 seconds. We would be willing to.
Just for the record, this board didn't require anyone to turn their sign intervals to 13 seconds. This board had a discussion in that case, in the Outfront Media case, and to my recollection, I was here at every meeting, and it was very simple how we came up with that 13 seconds. And we certainly did not force that on that applicant, but what we did conclude, working with the applicant, that 13 seconds based on the traffic safety pattern that was testified to by our chief of police at the time, necessitated that maybe this wasn't the standard intersection at which New Jersey DOT has done previous studies. So the applicant thought in that case, maybe less of an interval per minute was appropriate. So again, I am not gonna force any interval on you, and you know, I'm just gonna request, what's the interval proposed here at this monument, billboard, monument? 13 seconds. Thank you very much.
Mr. Chairman, just a question for the attorneys perhaps, because now I really am confused. I really am confused. You're saying you're making reference to testimony that was provided and questions asked and answered in the original case that was brought before this board, and yet you said that you're going to erase that and start all over with a de novo application for these uh, billboard, I'm sorry, monument billboard sign that was on Route, Route twenty-two on the east side, close to what used to be the Red Bull Inn. So are we allowed to reference that testimony or just forget it?
Well, actually, that was the prior case where the thirteen seconds came up for. When they started this application at the last hearing, you know, they, they offered up some testimony, which they're now saying, no, we're gonna start that testimony over. For purposes of this application, there has been no testimony until just now that they would um, agree to or propose thirteen seconds as their time.
Right. But any reference to the case that we were listening to earlier, um, which they then said tonight we're going to start over on, is that relevant to anything we're discussing tonight?
No, because what they, what they offered last time was, you know, they started to go into some uh, some facts of their case, board raised some questions, and, and then immediately stopped. Transcript, which I haven't seen of that hearing, it's probably only a few pages long, I think, right?
Well, no, the, the, the trans.
When, when you started this property.
Oh, yeah, yeah, that's correct, right, that's correct.
Just, no, I, I was making reference to the earlier application um, with the different property, close to the uh, former Red Bull Inn.
We're not, we're not um, we're not using prior testimony for this application, from that application for this application.
Okay.
Right? Other than we accepted the transcript of the company's background itself. The properties are, are different. The signs are different, sizes are different.
Correct.
The, the rationale.
I just wanted to make sure that the, the, um, the discussions weren't bleeding into, from one appli- one application into the other.
Right.
As long as we keep those ground rules in place, I think we're set.
We should, right.
Well, yeah, Mr. Bartkowski, just so the record's clear, um, the, wha- what does New Jersey, uh, state of New Jersey recommend, or what is the standard in New Jersey with regard to how often the display would change?
Eight seconds.
And I, I believe you, again, just to keep it in this application, uh, wasn't there a, some, a federal standard as well?
Or my, or what? There, there's federal guidelines that say not less than five seconds.
Federal guidelines that say not less than five seconds, and New Jersey has adopted a standard of eight seconds, that's correct?
That's correct.
But uh, boards such as this are able, if they want to, to require more than eight seconds, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
We're not requiring that. You've offered thirteen seconds.
I fully, I fully understand that, and we, we, you, you asked the question as to what is the proposed flip time, and my answer was thirteen seconds.
You're very clear about that.
Well, the boards can, and I don't recall the out, uh, the other application that you referred to, but boards have a, of an ability to condition approvals on, on the higher, on higher than eight seconds, that was the point that I was trying to make.
The only experience with this is after hearing traffic and safety testimony in a previous case, which is unrelated to this case.
Yes.
That we worked with that applicant, and we came up with a time that happened to be thirteen seconds. This board is not requiring you, you gave that number on your own.
I did.
And I heard thirteen seconds.
That's correct.
Mr. Aller has some questions, and then we're gonna have some board professionals, and we're gonna open up the members of the public.
Thank you. Mr. Bartowski, I just wanna refer back to what I believe is the third to last slide, at least it's the third to last page on eight-two. It's math to reach uh, the total fine area of eight hundred and eighty-six.
Sir.
Okay, so that eight hundred and eighty, I'm sorry, eight hundred and sixty-eight point four square feet is the illuminated portion of the sign, is that right?
That is what we would, that is what we would call the active area, it is what is visible.
Okay, so let me put this, doesn't include the foundation that you're using to get your sign up?
It, it does not include any trim, does it not include any border, does not include any structural elements, does not only, does not include any frame. This is the calculation that would be the viewable active area of the display. What we are proposing is specifically seven hundred and thirty-three point four-four square feet.
That's what I was getting for that, right? The engineer's plan shows seven hundred and thirty-three point four square feet?
And that is what we are proposing.
And that's correct?
That is correct.
I was just saying, so now you're saying, well, we're proposing seven thirty-three a little bit less than what you're.
We took into consideration the board's commentary on this subject matter from prior applications and adjusted accordingly.
So the total square footage for the sign is actually seven thirty-three point four point two?
If you included both displays viewable to traffic traveling in opposite direction, that is correct.
Scarlett, are, are you able to confirm that that's the appropriate way to measure the square footage of the sign?
The square footage of a sign is every bit of the um, every bit of the materials above ground level. So it includes the base, it inclu- it doesn't include the air, if you will, if there's a cutout, it includes the Bridgewater, it includes every square inch of the solid base of the sign, or if it's on a, if it's on a, a, um, a pole, it includes the pole, the, the face of the pole.
So for purposes of what the variance is?
Right.
Where I'm heading here. It seems that it would be more for variance purposes in accordance with the ordinance, it's more than the seven thirty-three point four.
If we're including every element of the structure, from the brick to the trim to the frame.
Will it include what the, the ordinance says?
And the, and that's correct.
So for next time, can you give us what that number is?
Yes.
So in the event there's an approval here, I wanna be sure that we are approving the proper size per the ordinance.
We understand. All right. I believe, Mr. Aller, we have that answer. It was outlined in the review letter, um, and it is twelve hundred square feet when you include all of the elements of the structure.
At one side, or?
That would be twelve hundred square feet per side. And um, I, I, Mr. Foose, uh, if you may, um, I did have specific answers to specific questions in the review letter, um, uh.
Let's, let them get started here, and then we'll, we'll go through it real quick, and we'll see what we can pick off, and Scarlett, could you?
I just, I just have one question, um, and that is, uh, on your, well, on the circular distance, you, you very nicely put the source on the lower right-hand corner.
Yes.
The, the question that I had, you have a, after that, you have the sign face analysis, and it's a, it's a growing um, informational uh, piece. I'd like to know if you could give us a new set for the, not a whole bunch of them, but, but at least just one, that gives the source of this information. What I'm particularly interested in is viewer reaction time of ten seconds. It's a long time, and I would like to see the source that was used for that on the bottom right-hand corner.
No problem.
Thank you. That would be it for me, Mr. Chairman.
Hi, Bill. Thanks, Mr. Chairman. Um, so I do, I have a couple of questions, and the first one I wanna go back to is the size of the display area. If you can go to the last slide, which I think is in our, our PowerPoint. Oh, the, the one with the actual diagram. Do you have that in, in yours?
No.
No? There it is, it's hidden. Yep. So, just wanna clarify, so I'm hearing seven hundred and thirty-three point four-four display area?
Square feet.
On, on this exhibit that appears to match the site plan is the red rectangle in the upper left-hand corner, the display area that we're talking about?
No.
It's not?
No.
Okay. Can you then explain, because what we're looking at here is over nine hundred square feet, that red rectangle. So what is the difference between what we're seeing here versus that display area?
The, the red rectangle is just delineating the overall height by the overall length. The actual square footage of seventy, seven hundred and thirty-three point four-four is the active area, which is delineated by this specific red line here that you see zoomed in.
So that, that red line appears to, appears to equate to the red rectangle.
No, because it's not, it's not a rectangle. If you see this upper piece is at an angle.
Correct.
This is, this is ninety degrees.
So you're saying that the nine hundred-plus square feet rectangle in the upper left-hand corner versus the bottom right-hand corner that has a little bit of an angle represents over two hundred square foot difference?
You have, you have, you have the notches here on the bottom corner, on both sides. You have all of this area in the upper area, you have this area here in the upper area, and then you have what would be an area connecting the bottom all the way across.
Okay, so that is seven thirty-three then?
Correct.
Based on a scale drawing.
Okay. That's taken right out of CAD.
Okay, very good.
All right. So as per the latest, the March sixteen, twenty-twenty-three Doyle and Burr updated report, basically, everything that they bring up, we're gonna assume that you accept unless we talk about it now.
In the review letter.
Yes.
Yes, and I, and, and we have, um, I have answers to a majority of the questions here in the review letter, as well as our other professionals will be able to answer those that are specific to their testimony.
Perfect. You wanna go through your testimony then?
I'll go through this, I'll, I'll call out the specific line items and, and the responses to those if, if the board uh, chooses. Um, the, uh, starting with number three, the question surrounded, um.
Can you just read the, 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 the audience, the general gist?
Yeah, I wasn't gonna read the question, I was just gonna give, give the gist, if that's okay, Mr. Foose. The, uh, the, the general overview of this question is um, that this lot was created by subdivision, it was, uh, there was an expectation that it would be merged with the abutting C-three zone lot. Um, uh, and the question um, insinuated that we would potentially need a removal of the guardrail in order to create vehicular access to the site. Um, the guardrail does not need to be removed. Um, as a condition of approval, uh, we will obtain a highway access permit, um, HAP permit from NJ DOT, and our, our access is, is shown um, entering the property before the guardrail begins.
The guardrail will stay as it is?
As it is.
To have access to the.
Correct. Number four, um, how often will the sign copy change? I think we've beat this one to death, thirteen seconds. Um, uh, how many sides of the sign will have messages? I think we covered this already, but there are two displays on the installation. Um, all service is required to be underground, we will comply. Um, question six asks if there will be any ground-mounted lighting for the sign, um, other than the display area, and what will the colors of those be and how many lights will be installed? Uh, what we're proposing is halo-lit cut metal letters, so this is lighting inside the Bridgewater Township letters. Um, we're proposing the township seal to be internally illuminated, and we're proposing six RGB LED fixtures to illuminate the two brick columns of the structure. All lighting on the sign will be programmed to be clear in color and non-changing or non-intermittent. Number seven, the uh, is, is someone answered with number six, the, the, number seven asks if there will be LED colors in any of what we're calling the architectural lighting, and the answer is no, we will program that to clear. Question number nine, uh, what measures will be used to restrict people from parking in the parking area? Uh, if, if this board so feels that that's an important element to the installation, um, we would propose having gated access immediately off of the paved cartway of Route twenty-two, um, so that it would be set back sufficiently that a vehicle could safely pull off of twenty-two and then unlock the gate in order to gain access to the rest of the site. Number ten, the crossbar of the sign should have no owner advertising or phone number, uh, as was analogously referenced in the um, out front billboard. We would agree that there would be no additional signage on the cross member pertaining to the operator of the company. Um, the only requirement that we have under NJ DOT compliance is that we are issued a permit number, and that permit number needs to be visible and placed on each side of the sign structure. So absent uh, that permit number, there would be no other signage of any kind on that crossbar.
You're saying your name will not appear anywhere on that sign?
That's correct. The, the app, uh, question number eleven, the applicant should comment on the stark area of the parking lot with no landscaping, shrubbery and trees along the driveway are recommended. Uh, we will comply um, with any of the township's professionals as to ultimately what the landscaping plan looks like on site. We've proposed, excuse me, I believe, a hundred and twenty-two plannings exclusive of the tree replacement, um, and whatever the board's professionals deem is appropriate, so long as it doesn't obstruct the visibility of the display, we will comply with.
You also testified a hundred and two trees would be replaced, working with Scarlett, as a condition of approval.
Yes, uh, and they would be replaced on any parcel, municipally-owned parcel that the township deems appropriate, and that's in compliance with Bridgewater's ordinance. The um, moving to question thirteen, the, the plan should state that the proposed landscaping shall be guaranteed. Uh, we will comply, um, and additionally, we would create an operation and maintenance agreement um, uh, for uh, approval for the township, uh, that we would enter into, that would um, control all of the um, operation and maintenance requirements, including putting a, a meaningful escrow aside pursuant to the approved landscaping plan to ensure that the site is maintained in accordance with that operation and maintenance agreement. Uh, number fifteen, will public service announcements displayed be offered to Bridgewater Township? Um, a- a- and if so, how many times per day? Uh, the answer is yes. Uh, Bridgewater Township would have dedicated use of one advertising slot every two minutes from each display. We are proposing that this display would be operational seventeen hours a day. That would, that translate to Bridgewater communication appearing five hundred and ten times per seventeen-hour operational day on each side of the installation.
That would be part of the O and M that you work out with the administration?
That would be outlined in the O and M agreement, that's correct.
But the requirement would, would be imposed by the board?
Yes, sir. Will be thirteen seconds. And, and thank you for bringing that attention to my attention, Mr. Sweeney, because at thirteen seconds, it would not translate to five hundred and ten times a day. It would be a number less than that, and I will get you that number. Yes. That's correct. Thank you. Uh, number eight, uh, excuse me, number sixteen, there's a depiction of the sign, but the applicant should give detailed testimony of what the sign will look like and what materials will be used. Um, um, will the applicant provide a realistic video of the sign and with examples of the copy change? We've entered into exhibit, which I believe Mr. Foose is A three, which is the Lumen rendering, which is to scale. We also outlined the building materials by name and visually in what is now A two. Um, will the sign also be available to display certain emergency messages? Uh, yes, the installation would automatically tie in to the federal Amber Alert uh, system, um, and any request by emergency officials locally to run emergency messages uh, would be immediately facilitated. Uh, question number nineteen, at what distance can a driver discern the message and what signs and intersections are in that distance? Uh, excuse me, this is a question that um, uh, I'll reserve for. Excuse me, this is a question that I'll reserve for our traffic safety engineer. I apologize. I read out of line. Question 20 and 21 appear to be duplicate questions in, in the testimony. Question number 23, if approved, structural and geotechnical calculations or reports shall be provided. We will comply. 24, if approved, the applicant must submit a grading plan for the building permit. We will comply. If approved, there shall be no stopping, idling or use of Route 22 right away during the period of construction. We will comply. We recommend that, question number 26, we recommend that application form 3D be revised to indicate that the applicant is seeking preliminary and final major site plan with DNC variances. We will comply. And lastly, question 27, if approved, it is recommended that a developer's agreement be required. We will comply. All the other remaining questions in this letter will be addressed by our other two professionals as they deem the subject matter more appropriate for them to address.
All right. Thank you, Barcaski. I'm sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Chairman. No, no, I was going to open it up to members of the public. Oh, I just had one other question for Mr. Barcaski. So, Mr. Barcaski, you testified, I believe, earlier that there would be no financial benefit to the town in connection with the billboards. Did you mean to say that there would be no direct, you know, monetary payment made to the town based upon the sign and the content? As opposed to there would be an improvement on property presumably that you would own? In this case, I think you're a contract purchaser. So there would be, in your experience, an increase in the property tax associated with the property?
There would be no direct financial compensation from us as the owner and operator of the sign to the municipality, but there would be a tax benefit to the municipality based upon the improvements that are made at the site.
Just wanted to make sure that point was made. All right, members of public, we're going to start some questions and we're going to work in a break here, but why don't we get one or two on the record here? You want to come up and give us your name and your address and you can ask questions on testimony that you just heard. And I know, Mr. Brookner, you know what you're doing. Good evening.
Good evening, Mr. Fuss. I'm Jeffrey Brookner, 60, Nicole Terrace in Bridgewater.
Is that your last name?
B R O O K N E R. And just so we're clear, this is not the opportunity for the public to present testimony. This is just to.
Thank you. If I can just jump in, at the end of this meeting, everyone that's here can speak for or against, kind of unlimited as much as you want to say, but right now, this is only on, basically it's in question format for any of the testimony that you just heard today. So we got a good role model starting us off here.
Thank you. Well, I don't know about good.
Now the pressure's on.
I just had one question about your testimony where you were talking about the fact that this site would be consistent with the surrounding community or the surrounding parcels. And I'm wondering which parcels you considered as saying? Are you just talking about the immediately adjacent parcels? You're talking about the entire run of 22? What, what area are you focusing on?
We got a wireless mic floating around just for you.
Maybe, maybe it was the attorney who said that. Hard to tell from behind who's talking.
I don't believe that the, I said that the parcel or this use is consistent with the surrounding parcels that, and we can pull back the transcript.
No, no, that's, that's fine. If that's not part of your testimony, then it's not appropriate for me to address it right now.
I don't believe that that was part of my testimony. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'm Kathy Franco, 766 Weemac Road. F R A N, as in Nancy C O. 766 Weemac, W E E M A C. Um, Mr. Butkalski, I'm probably pronouncing it wrong. Have you ever been a principal or an owner in any other outdoor advertising company?
I'm a principal or owner directly or indirectly in 141 entities involved in the business of outdoor advertising.
Um, is one of them or has it been Chester County Outdoor?
Yes.
And did you sue a number of townships based upon their refusal to erect outdoor advertising?
Let me just, I just, yeah, let me just.
I just wanted to give some general rules as to the questioning parameters. So you can ask the witness any question you'd like about what he testified to. We didn't really go into his prior history with the different company that may or may not be affiliated that we.
Okay, I, I didn't.
It's really an appropriate question. I kind of cut off his train of thought. But, uh, the questions from you right now should really be just focused on what he testified to.
Okay, I apologize. Um, as far as the plantings of trees, which you said you would place on township property and not necessarily replace trees on this property, how will you assure that they live? You know, I mean, is there any guarantee wherever Scarlet or this board decides that those get placed, if not on this property, how will there be an assurance to the township that these survive?
Any of the trees that we plant, whether on the property or on another parcel designated by the municipality, would come with a one-year guarantee from the date of placement to ensure that they were able to adequately survive the transplanting.
Okay. Um, you talked about certain standards from the outdoor advertising industry. What exactly does the outdoor advertising industry include? Is that display monuments and billboards, you know, what is traditionally known as billboards? Does it include just non-electronic as well as electronically changing messages? What exactly is included in the outdoor advertising industry?
I was specifically referring to sign face sizes of both digital and static signs specifically for outdoor advertising, whether in a billboard configuration, a monument configuration or otherwise.
Okay, and why is it that you choose to call your product a monument? And, um, seem to get upset when people talk about it being a digital billboard? Is it considered advertising? Let me ask that.
The monument displays are distinguished from a billboard in a variety of ways. First of all, from a design standpoint, all of them are custom designed to the specific municipalities in which they are located. Number two, they support visual communication technology in a non-standard rectangular configuration. Number three, they include in almost all instances unless specifically requested by a municipality, municipal identification in either township seal or as well in township name. They always include an extensive amount of landscaping at each one of the installations. They always include architectural lighting. By comparison to the other 6,400 approximate outdoor advertising signs in the state of New Jersey, all of those signs have their displays, whether static or digital, in a standard rectangular configuration. The overwhelming majority of them rest on an industrial monopole foundation with no architectural lighting, no municipal identification, no landscaping, no water features or any other elements that you would see in a monument sign. Monument signs are designed to display off-premise messaging, otherwise known as outdoor advertising messaging, as well as emergency messaging and community content.
You charge for advertising?
The, the installations generate revenue through the leasing of space for the purposes of disseminating outdoor advertising communication.
Okay. Um, I, I just wanted to be sure that it is, it is indeed advertising information. And what percentage in other townships have you found, and maybe you didn't cover this, maybe this isn't appropriate, of the digital displays that you do or that are contracted with you? What percentage of those generally come from in-town commercial or, you know, messages versus just general, you know, is it going to be, you know, the cannabis seller in Somerset who is going to advertise?
Yes. So the overwhelming percentage of utilization of clients on the displays, 70.6% of it comes from eight key categories. Those categories include HVAC services, automobile dealers, casual dining restaurants, residential real estate brokerage, higher education, hospitals and independent medical and dental offices. I believe I covered all of them there. That's the overwhelming majority. On a percentage basis, you see a pretty equal distribution between local advertisers and regional advertisers. From a national utilization, it varies based upon geography, but you see anywhere between 18 and 22% is being utilized by national advertisers. The balance is local and regional in nature. As so far as the permitted advertising that's on the installation, that is one of the reasons we enter into an O and M, an O and M agreement with municipality, because that O and M agreement has two important provisions in it. One, it lists all of the excluded advertising that the municipality can choose to have included in that exclusion list. Secondly, it includes a provision that says in the event there is something displayed on the sign that is not on the exclusion list, but the community, the township, excuse me, in its sole discretion finds some poor taste, there's a requirement for us to remove it. Out of all of our installations and thousands of advertisers, we've never had a municipality have to utilize that provision. So to your specific question about the cannabis dealer down the road, if the township desires not to have cannabis advertising from the display, that can be easily put into the exclusion list in the O and M agreement.
And if that cannabis seller, you know, is upset with the fact that it's restricted, does that put the township at any legal risk of getting sued for restriction of their trade via this model?
Kathy Franco, he didn't testify to who.
Okay, okay, okay.
But I, I want you to, to get resolution on this.
Okay.
It sounds like he pretty impressively rattled off of who's going to be, and then, I don't want to testify on your behalf, but it sounds like you have an O and M agreement with the town that could preclude and override those.
Yeah, the reason why we specifically have an O and M agreement is exactly to the questions he asked. It's a really good question. Because it's in an O and M agreement and it's between the township and a individual corporate party, you can put anything you want in an O and M agreement for the exclusions. If by ordinance it was to prohibit cannabis advertising, then that would, and I'm not coming to a legal conclusion, but from my layman's conclusion, that would require, that would end up being a First Amendment violation. So that's specifically why it's in the O and M agreement.
Mr. Barcaski's a pretty good layman lawyer. No, no, it's impressive. Kathy, I hope we got your answer, kind of.
Yeah, I, okay. Um, I think that was it. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Let's do one more question, then we'll do a break.
Regina Tegler, 3 Loft Drive, Martinsville. And John.
Last name for us?
T E G E L E R.
Got it.
Um, and I'll stick to just what you testified for. I have a lot to say later.
Sure.
You stated that this would be traffic safety neutral. I was wondering if that would include people in two categories, one of which I'm in, teenagers and older drivers. Do you have anything about that?
I would be happy to provide my answer to the question, or we have a traffic safety expert here today that I think is better positioned to answer that question.
That's a traffic question.
Okay. All right, traffic question. Um, and then the 17-hour operation of the sign, is that, does that work out in most places that you put these signs? Are people happy with that?
We have, um, our installations go on two types of roadways, surface level roadways like the one proposed here and limited access highways. When we're on a limited access highway, our installations operate 24 hours a day. When we're on a surface level roadway, we choose to operate them at 17 hours.
11 to 6?
And one more, one more question. I'm sorry, did I cut you off?
Uh, 7:00 AM to 12:00 PM is typically how we operate them, but if the board desired it to be 11 to 6, that would be fine.
Put this all together today in a hurry. Oh, who will maintain the landscaping and/or trees after the one year? Did, you said you were sticking with it for one year. Is the township after that?
So to be clear, any transplanting or landscaping that we're doing on the site would be subject to the O and M agreement that we would own in perpetuity. Any of the tree transplanting that we would do for trees located on municipal owned land that is not this subject site would come with a one-year guarantee. That guarantee is actually issued by the nursery and the company that do the transplanting because they have responsibility for implementing that.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Yes, Scarlet?
Yes, um, I, I, this is oversight. Um, our ordinance requires a two-year maintenance Are you suggesting you're only going to provide one or just did you not know that?
I, I did not realize, Scarlet, that it, it requires two years. We'll be happy to comply with two years.
Uh, you did promise a list of two, a list of two-sided signs in the area, so that would be provided at the next meeting.
Yes, I'll, I'll email those to you well before the next meeting.
Uh, the time is 8:48. Why don't we take 10 minutes? We'll see everyone back here. Let's call it 9 o'clock. Thank you.